Good evening and welcome to the online meeting of the Burbank Planning Board on Monday, February 8th, 2021. Before we begin our meeting, there will be separate periods of public comment tonight, one for the public hearing and one general comment period towards the end of the meeting. Person speaking during the public hearing may only address the planning board regarding that hearing. Person speaking during the general public comment period may provide the planning board oral communication on any matter concerning city business. If you would like to participate in the public comment periods, please call 818-238-3335. We will announce when the phone lines are open. This evening, a board member, Atakunian, will be leading us in the invocation, followed by board member Rosati with a flag salute. Will everyone please rise?
Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and give us the wisdom to engage in sound deliberation. May our conduct create an environment of cooperation and kindness for all. Thank you for the opportunities you give us to serve you and this great city, and please help us to accomplish our goals. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, board members. May I have the roll call, please?
Yes. Board member Ambela?
Here.
Board member Atakunian?
Present.
Board member Rosati?
I am here.
Vice Chair Hadian?
Present.
And Chair Liu?
Present.
All members are present.
Thank you. In order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner during the current state of emergency and in the interest of public health and safety, board members will be participating in an online planning board meeting. City facilities are closed to the public until further notice, and the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. The city is providing alternate in-person attendance for viewing and participating in planning board meetings. In lieu of in-person attendance, members of the public may participate in the public comment period by calling 818-238-3335. Do we have any announcements from city staff?
Madam Chair, we do not.
Okay, thanks. For this evening, there is one public hearing on tonight's agenda. Now is the time and place for the hearing on project number 18-0002676 concerning a request to amend the existing development agreement for PD number 2001-2, Bob Hope Office Center project, for a 12-month interim extension until April 20th, 2022, to allow for preparation of the EIR as required by the California Environmental Quality Act. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflict of interests relating to this hearing?
No.
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 No. Have any board members, planning board members, had any communications, including written or oral, with the applicant or the applicant's representative or other persons?
No.
No.
No. Mr. Ramirez, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
Other than the two that were provided in your agenda packet, there are no other communications.
Okay, thank you. Well, the representative of the community development department, please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us.
Good evening, Chair Liu and members of the planning board. My name is Lisa Frank, senior planner in the community development department. Tonight, the board will consider a recommendation to the city council of an extension of time for development agreement for Plan Development 2001-2, the Bob Hope Office Center project, located at 3201 West Olive Avenue. The request is regarding a proposed fourth amendment to the development agreement for this PD. The purpose of the amendment is to allow additional time for the city to complete an environmental impact report, or EIR, that would study a longer-term development agreement amendment through July 7th, 2027. This amendment only proposes an extension of time from April 30th, 2021, to April 30th, 2022, in order to complete the EIR for the longer-term extension. The Fourth Amendment before you tonight does not propose any other changes to the existing development agreement or conditions of approval. The project site is a vacant 1.4-acre site located in the Media District specific plan area. The site is bounded by Alameda Avenue to the north, Olive Avenue to the south, and Lima Street to the west, with California Street bisecting the project site. This image also gives an idea of the zoning in the surrounding area, which includes PDs for the Tellaria Project, Burbank Studios, and the Pinnacle Media Offices, as well as multifamily and single-family zoned properties to the north of Alameda. This here is the proposed site plan for the project. The site is currently entitled for 109,470 office equivalent gross square feet, or OEGSF, of office building. OEGSF is a concept within the Media District specific plan area that establishes different ratios for different uses depending on their peak hour trip generation relative to that of a general office use. For general office, the office equivalency factor is one, so in this case, the 109,470 is the same as it would be using the standard square footage terms. And this here is the conceptual three-story office elevation for the site. Now I will briefly walk through the history of the planned development and development agreement. One, the original PD and DA were approved on May 29th, 2001, to build out 103,500 OEGSF of office space and a 20,000-square-foot, 300-seat live-performing arts theater/museum, which equated to 5,970 OEGSF. The term of the original agreement was for a 10- to 13-year period depending on the phase of development. Two, on April 22nd, 2008, the city approved the First Amendment to the Development Agreement. This amendment eliminated the 20,000-square-foot theater/museum building and increased the office space by 5,970 square feet to an overall office square footage of 109,470 OEGSF, the same square footage as the board is seeing tonight. Three, after the First Amendment, the DA was set to expire on July 7th, 2011. On September 21st, 2010, the city approved the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement to extend the entitlement of the 109,470 OEGSF office building to July 7th, 2019. Four, on April 17th, 2018, prior to the July 2019 expiration, the developer submitted a request to extend the vesting terms of the DA for PD 2001-2 to July 2027. Staff determines that the impacts of such an extension would need to be studied through preparation of an EIR, environmental impact report. A 12-month extension was therefore requested with no change to the office entitlement so that an updated EIR could be prepared before consideration of the longer-term extension to 2027. This was the Third Amendment that was approved by the planning board and council in 2019, extending the term of the PD to December 31st, 2020. During that 12 months, the city's environmental consultant, Michael Baker International, began to work on the EIR with city staff and the applicant. However, ultimately, it did not move forward because some of the required application materials were not submitted by the project developer in sufficient time. Five, as the DA was set to expire on December 31st, 2020, on December 20th, 2020, just prior to the expiration, the project applicant requested a short-term administrative extension to the DA citing Section 7.03 of their DA pertaining to delays resulting from unforeseen circumstances or events beyond the developer's control. In making this request, the developer indicated that their delay was related to challenges that they experienced related to the COVID-19 pandemic. The community development director considered the request and approved a four-month extension from December 31st, 2020, to April 30th, 2021. As indicated in their updated application provided with the staff report, the developer still wishes to propose a longer-term extension through 2027. As such, a 12-month extension is now requested to allow time for completion of the EIR. The developer also indicated that during the prior 12-month extension, they determined that they would also propose a mixed-use concept as a project alternative to be studied in the EIR. The applicant and property owner are both here this evening to answer any questions from the board. If approved, the 12-month extension would extend the DA to April 30th, 2022, to allow for completion of the EIR. As previously noted, in 2018, the project applicant proposed a Third Amendment to extend the development agreement and unmodified entitlements for the 109,470 OEGSF office building until July 7th, 2027. At present, with a recent four-month interim extension, the DA for the PD has vested rights to proceed with the previously approved project entitlements for the 109,470 OEGSF office building until April 30th, 2021. The four-month extension was granted by the community development director pursuant to the terms of the DA, as the project applicant indicated that despite the delays resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic, that they still wished to proceed with a long-term extension request. Staff is therefore recommending a 12-month extension of the development agreement until April 30th, 2022, in order to provide the time necessary to complete the EIR process that was not finished during the previous 12-month extension. Subject to the planning board's approval of the applicant's request for additional time to complete the EIR, the Fourth Amendment to the DA for PD number 2001-2 would include the time extension until April 30th, 2022, without changes to the previous approvals. The EIR would study the extension of the DA to July 7th, 2027, and would include analysis of any alternative development scenario being proposed by the applicant. If the one-year extension is approved, the board will have an opportunity to make a recommendation on the longer-term request for a five-year extension at the completion of the EIR as part of the board's review of the associated project entitlements. As noted in the resolution included in the attachments to the report, it is staff's assessment that the interim extension under the requested Fourth Amendment to the DA is consistent with the city zoning code and satisfies the relevant provisions of the BMC related to the process and review of a modification request to an existing development agreement. Further, the project is consistent with the golden policies of the city's Burbank 2035 general plan and the Media District specific plan by allowing sufficient and reasonable development opportunity for commercial land uses within the Media Districts. In order to recommend approval of the extension, staff recommends that the planning board approve a resolution of the planning board of the city of Burbank recommending approval of the Fourth Amendment to the Development Agreement related to Plan Development number 2001-2, project number 18-0002676. This concludes the presentation. Staff as well as the applicant are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to invite the applicant or their representative to address the planning board. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Hi, good evening, members of the planning board. This is Jeff Worth, part of the applicant team. I just wanted to point out, we didn't purchase this site from the Hope family until 2011. So, a majority of the amendments that had previously, I think, the First, Second, and Third Amendment was all done during their ownership. The only amendments we've been working on here, which were listed as Four and Five, were in connection with this same request of trying to get both the existing entitlements extended as well as analyzing an alternative project, which was really born out of the need that we've heard and seen from the city for more housing, so we wanted to contemplate a housing project as well. That's really the, you know, the bug. I apologize. We take full responsibility for the delays that we've had in some of this materials and the application process. We had a pretty tough year last year. We're continuing to have some difficulty with the existing business and existing properties, so we, but I think that all the materials that the city has requested are going to be delivered this week. So I want you to know that we're back on track, and we appreciate, you know, your consideration and obviously are here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Worth. We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. To address the planning board, please call 818-238-3335. The phone lines are now open, and please bear with us because it may take a few minutes for the first callers to get through the line.
And Chair, if we can give two minutes since you've made the announcement to see if we get people on the line?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Ramirez. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Good evening. Good evening, planning board. And my name is Tamala Takahashi. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I have a comment and a question for the board to consider. The, I've been a resident here for 22 years in the city of Burbank, and I live near this parcel. And it's, as far, as long as I can remember, it's been vacant. And so, the delays have been at least 10 years in putting something on this parcel, and looking at the math, if I'm doing the math right, it may up to be up to 10 more years that this parcel is vacant. So I'm wondering if this is approved tonight and if this moves forward, is there a way to make that parcel usable by the community while we're waiting for these things to be come, before this development is approved and started to be built, so that we can enjoy this space? It's a really prominent parcel in the city, and it'd be great to be able to use it. And then, other question is what happens if this is not approved tonight? It seems pretty straightforward to me, but I want to understand as a community member, perhaps why this needs to be approved and what happens if it doesn't get approved tonight? Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have one more caller in the queue.
Thanks.
if we can give a few minutes.
Mr. Ramirez, while we're waiting, can we just do some clarification based on the public comment question that we just received? Whether, whether something, whether that parcel could be used or something else in the interim, and what happens if it's not approved tonight?
Sure, I'll have senior planner Lisa Frank respond, and then I'll follow up if necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, Chair Liu. I'll just start by answering the very good question about what happens if it's not approved tonight. Essentially, what would happen is that the request could not proceed to the city council, and the, or the, sorry, the recommendation would be to deny, and then it would be considered by the council. And if it doesn't move forward, the PD would expire, and essentially revert back, the DA and PD would expire and revert back to the underlying zoning that existed on the property before this project was ever initiated. The developer could always come forward with a new PD and DA request, or another developer could do that. So essentially, it would start from, from new. And so that, that's to address the first question. And then, as far as the interim use, I think I'll defer to Fred or Scott if you want to chime in there.
So, Chair, I think on the, on what, can it be used for something in the interim during construction? I mean, it is private property, that's something that we could look at, it's a public comment, but at this point, the only thing that's in front of the board tonight is the request for an extension to undertake the environmental impact report and look at the requested project entitlements as they're bundled together and move forward through that process. So, I would say at this point, we'd be speculating. It would be part of the discussion ultimately, as we go through this process. It's been noted that there was an interest on a possible interim use while it's being built, but ultimately, that would have to be discussed and eventually, if, considered negotiated with the developer, because ultimately, it is private property, not, not public property.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez and Ms. Frank.
I believe the next caller is back online. We're gonna put them through.
Hello?
Sonia, you are now on live with the planning board.
Thank you very much. Hi, my name is Sonia Mason. I'm a 20-year resident of Burbank, very proud to be here. I only have one question. The proposal that was submitted, the one that we received, and I actually went online and looked at the, at the presentation, looks fantastic, but my only concern is that with the current COVID situation and how businesses have adapted to working from home, is this building going to really be used as an office space, or is it just kind of until we figure out whether we can make apartments out of it later on? I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to get to understand what the long-term plan is given all the current situation in the world. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll address that question when we have the, Mr. Wolf, when I have you speak again. Are there any other public comments?
There are no other callers in the queue.
Okay, thank you. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Would the representative of the community development department like to make any further comments?
Thanks, Chair Liu. I don't have any further comments.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wolf, would you like to make any further comments? You have a maximum of 10 minutes.
I'd just like to address the question that was just asked. There certainly has been some impacts to office space and how, how people maybe intend to use it in the future. That's one of the reasons we're adding the apartment mixed-use project as an alternative, because that's something that I think could probably be brought forward sooner than the office project. But, you know, we certainly hope, based on the significant investment we've made in the city of Burbank, that the office buildings will come back, and people will still need to, to, to work in an environment collaboratively together. So, we just think having both options would get this project developed the quickest. Let me, you know, hopefully that answers the question.
Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions of staff or the applicant?
Chair Liu, I have a question of the applicant.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Worth, and thank you for being here with us. You just mentioned that you appreciate, I mean, the investment that you've made in the, in the city of Burbank. I hope, and I'm sure you also recognize, the investment Burbank has made in the Worth company. It's been a while, and I think this discussion has come up before, and one of the callers just alluded to it, actually both of them. The underlying concern was how long is this property going to stay vacant? And I don't want you to think that the past year has, I, I don't consider it to be a difficult one. It was a difficult one, especially someone in the business that you're in. The question is, how much longer are you anticipating another, you said documents are going to be delivered next week? What is realistically speaking, is this, and if this one year was going to be sufficient, why even consider an extension for another five? Would you address that, please?
Sure. The, the application materials have been delivered this week, but the answer on the question, the one year is what it's going to take the city and the outside consultants to process the request. So we wouldn't even have the approval and the right to, to develop either project until this EIR sequo analysis is completed. So this one year is not an extension for us to build a project, it's an extension for us to confirm the entitlements and come back with the two projects. That will get us to, roughly speaking, you know, April of '22. We therefore then have five years left to get a project built. That answered the question.
Well, somewhat, because now I'm trying to figure out why do we find ourselves in this situation? COVID is a, let's say, one-year issue. We didn't have COVID prior to that. So what happened in that period? Why, why was the project delayed? Earlier in your presentation, you mentioned that you take full responsibility. Can you please shed some light on where you feel that responsibility is?
Sure. So the, the extension that we received was for 2020. So that was the year that, last year was the year we were intending to process this request. So unfortunately, that's the year that we had a lot of distractions and a lot of other issues that we were facing that certainly nobody was planning for, and hopefully we'll be out of those sometime this year, 2021. Prior to that was all related to anything the Hope family did, the modifications they made and the extensions they requested. Our first extension request was for the year of 2020, when this was, this work was intended to be... of 2020, when this was, this work was intended to be completed.
You mentioned earlier that you purchased the property from the Hope family in 2011. Is that correct?
Yeah, we purchased the property in 2011. The last building we had built, office building we'd built was in 2009, which was a terrible time to have built an office building. It's the Point, one just up the street at Alameda and Bob Hope Drive, the blue one. That building opened up completely vacant and sat vacant for three years. Fortunately, now it's fully leased. But there was no environment to, to develop another office building since we just began this year, the last, on, on the Warner Brothers project that, that I sent the image of, I believe. That's the first building we've been able to build since 2009. So the, the market was not available for it. Economy wasn't supporting it. And for that reason, we're looking at this project alternative. We feel we could likely have something built much sooner if we had the option of both the office building or the apartment project.
Thank you.
One member, Rosati.
Mr. Worth, good evening. It's Christopher Rosati. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Just gonna ask you some pointed questions, help you out here. You, you are the owner of the NBC site, correct?
Yes, sorry, I'm muted. Correct.
And you guys have broken ground on that massive project?
Correct. We started that last August.
So when you say you've had some distractions, would that be one of them?
Sure, that's the biggest project that we've certainly ever taken on. And it was a, a big effort. And even building in this current environment with COVID is quite challenging. We have to make sure that we control the activities of these employees, even when they're not on our site, because that could stop the project. So it's been a bit of a challenge, something we've never faced before, but yes.
And then you also negotiated a deal on the ranch, potentially?
Yeah, so the arrangement that is made is we're building those office buildings that Warner Brothers will lease. They're actually going to purchase the balance of the Burbank Studios, the NBC lot. So they'll, they'll acquire where the sound stages exist. In exchange, we purchase the ranch lot from them. That is not for a period of over two years.
And then lastly, you, based on the current market conditions, and then the fact that we are in desperate need of housing, you decided to retool this project, which is causing you to come back with a new EIR, correct?
Correct.
And, and when did that, when did you decide to do that to retool the project?
Sorry, the decision was made in last year, when we were working with staff. And, you know, we've completed, recently completed the design of the alternative project, and that's what's getting submitted this week to staff.
So I just wanted to point out, you haven't really been sitting on your hands. You've been busy with projects. You've been building projects, and you retooled this project, hopefully to get more housing in the city. So we all want to see this built, I think, I think all of us want to see it built to its highest potential. And switching it to housing, I think would be to our betterment and to its highest potential. So a year from now, maybe we'll have shovel in the ground in 14 months?
Well, this might be, you know, a question that we could talk to staff about, but a year from now, we still couldn't, I believe, couldn't even submit plans for a permit because the, the Sequo process wouldn't be completed.
Okay.
So that's, that's what I'm trying, was trying to explain. This next year is not going to allow us to start construction.
Right.
Because we won't even have the project approved yet.
Right. So you, you'd need approval for the residential element, which hopefully staff, council will fast-track because of the housing element. So, okay, thank you.
Exactly.
Madam Chair, if I may have asked, I need, I have a couple of more questions of Mr. Worth.
Please go ahead. One member, can you?
Mr. Worth, Mr. Rosati, ask some questions, and, and I'm just going to follow up and try and get some clarification. So are you saying right now that the original project that you started with, which was the, the office building, you're now looking to abandon that and move forward with a residential project, or a mixed-use type of residential and commercial type of project?
No, what we're looking to do is maintain the office entitlement and add a project alternative, which would be the mixed-use project.
And, and when you say add an alternative, so basically, I, I'm not sure. If you could clarify this for me. So that means you would be able to build an office building, but in the alternative, you would be able to build a residential building?
Correct. It'd be either or.
And when will you make a decision as to which one you're going to move forward with?
Well, once we get through the Sequo process and see what we, we end up with, we'll know that we'll have what we, what we can do. But I think maybe to get to, to the point, I can tell you, if we had the residential entitlements today, the site wouldn't be a vacant lot, as we sit here today.
So, so basically, you're telling us that if you had the approval for residential today, then you would move forward with that?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Any other board members have questions? Yes. Board Member Gamboa.
Thanks. Thanks for the, answering these questions, Mr. Worth. And I think it's very illuminating as far as, you know, these conditions. I have a question for staff. Ms. Frank, you mentioned that if this didn't get extended and this, the PD went away and reverted to the underlying zone, what, what, what does the PD grant that, that makes it, you know, different from the underlying zone?
Oh, yes. Thanks for the question. I'll, I'll start off, and then if anyone wants to add anything. I think the main difference is the vested right to the existing entitlement. In addition to pursuing the 12-month requests that we've just been discussing to study an alternative, but the time, the, to construct, if the, if ultimately, the 12, if this 12-month extension is approved to move forward, the, the longer timeframe in which to build the project is one main difference. Typically, project entitlements without a PD, you have about a year to essentially enact the, the entitlement by applying through, for a building permit or a grading permit. So that's one thing. And then in terms of the square footage that's currently entitled under the PD, that wouldn't be, if someone came in today with just the zoning, it would look a little bit different in terms of what square footage for, let's say, an office use would be allowed because of how the initial square footage for the site was determined back in 2001 and then in the First Amendment.
To, to add, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
So the, so the vesting right of time is, is a significant component, as Mr. Worth mentioned, that over that timeframe, situations change. So someone going through an entitlement, you guys will, you might recall, is that when we've had housing projects or other developments, typically, it's like within one year, they have to build out the project, or in essence, they, they lose the discretionary permit. With the PD, in addition to the time, the other thing that is allowed to be, in essence, negotiated, is also certain development standards that would otherwise apply under the underlying zoning. And as you recall from some of these projects that you've seen come to you, we've been able to come to terms with developers that include more public benefits through that process. So that is something also that, you know, if someone was developing a by right project, we, we probably wouldn't be having that conversation with them. So it, it provides some rights, and it also allows the city to work with the developer, to focus in and not just build a building, but to help create and build a neighborhood as a result of the project. So I think it has mutual benefits when, when that can be reached, when, when terms can be met on both sides. So that's another benefit of the PD DA that doesn't directly, isn't directly reflected when you're just applying the standard zone, zoning requirements, because that, you're really looking at exactly what is on the books for that type of development, setbacks, FAR, parking requirements, whatnot. So through the PD, you can tailor a design to facilitate build-out, while at the same time accommodating certain public benefits that wouldn't otherwise be possible.
Yeah. Is it, am I right in assuming that the PD is essentially, is, is a zone change? So the only thing that can be built there right now is what's in the PD until it expires?
So you're right, the PD is the zoning for it. It's in essence, for better or for worse, I'm, I'm going to use my term, not, not others. It's basically a specific plan for that site. So you're allowed to build within the requirements that are noted in the, in the DA and the conditions of approval and the scope of that project. As Lisa mentioned, subsequent, if the DA were to expire, then we have language in some of our DAs where it reverts back to the underlying zoning, as far as the types of land uses that are allowed there, which in this case would be whatever the underlying zoning for that property was prior to it becoming a PD.
Has there been any comparison as far as what the applicant's proposing for the residential alternative compared to what the, what would be allowed under the underlying zone?
Not at this point, because ultimately, what you're asking about is something that we would be undertaking during this one-year extension period, when we look at what the environmental assessment would be, as well as the, the project alternative. So that is part of what we would be doing during that interim period, that interim extension period.
Well, I guess my, I ask this as a question for the applicant as well. Like, if, if, obviously, there's advantages to having this PD. I think you mentioned yourself, Mr. Worth, that it gives you the options to do both based on your financing or whatever comes through. But is there a value, if it was just straight residential, is it, do you get a better project for you with the PD and those, those regulations kind of baked in? Or is it equal to what you would get through your analysis is if you started from scratch?
I understand the question. I can tell you, on the office project, there is an advantage with the PD, PD over the underlying zoning. I actually don't know that there is on the residential. Jana, who's with, I don't know if she's allowed to speak, but she's with our team as well. She might have an answer about that. But I actually don't know if the unit count, for example, is any larger because there's a PD, because I don't, because the PD doesn't really contemplate residential today. That's not, that's an adjustment we're making.
I, if, I can add to that. The current PD only, it does permit housing only because it's a permitted use in the underlying district. Just so even, so if the PD were to go away, we would come back and apply for a housing project. We don't get any additional density because we're using the PD. But like Fred said, I don't think that that's exactly what we're talking about today. You're going to hear a lot more about that when we come back next year, when after Sequo review, and we look at density. But the density itself doesn't change whether we're in the PD or not. We would be using the base zoning of the media district, specific, specific plan for the zoning, and we would come to you with, and then with the state density bonus laws. So it's irrelevant that it was a PD or not. We just want to analyze it at the same time that would come before you with the PD extension for the office project, and both of those need to be reviewed under Sequo in an EIR.
And I guess for staff, if they came back with a totally blank slate project, they would still have to go through a, a Sequo process for that, correct?
That's correct. We still have to conduct that analysis. Now, what would that analysis be? It really would depend on the scope of the project at that point.
So I guess just to summarize my questioning, the advantage for everyone by extending this would be to keep the applicants ahead in this process faster than they might be otherwise, and potentially get additional housing that's not already there and not entitled for there, and then give them the flexibility to get a project to be done. I think, is that summarize it fairly?
I would say you've, Board Member Gamboa, you've summarized, in essence, the benefits on both sides of this effort that's currently underway.
Okay. And then if we didn't approve it, they came back, we're just saying a longer time for something to eventually come up anyway, likely housing. Okay.
I, I don't want to speculate, but you're right. That's a possibility. Yeah.
Thank you. I think that's it.
Any other board member questions?
Yes, Chair Lou, if I may.
Sure, board member. Can you?
Mr. Worth, following up on Mr. Gamboa's questions, I would ask you, this two-track approach, the residential, housing, housing, residential, as you, as you sit there right now, I know it's, it's, it's hard to, you know, foretell the future, but based on your analysis, which I'm sure you've done, do you anticipate at that time in one year to come back and request higher densities for the housing? Obviously, the return on investment is a factor, and, and the longer the project goes on, the more expensive it gets for the developer. And obviously, the developers, I mean, you're not the Red Cross, so you want to get some return on your investment. That's, that's only natural. Do you anticipate coming back in one year and saying, well, you know, I could build 40 units, but I really would like to build 75? Is that what we're going to be looking at?
No, the, the project description that we're going to submit this week is the project that we would, once it gets approved through the Sequo process and approved through the city process, is the project that we would pursue. We're not, we're not looking to change what we're giving you today, a year from now. We're looking to give you two alternative projects that this, that get studied from a Sequo process and have to come back to both yourself and the City Council. And once we know we have a project we can pursue, we're going to move forward.
All right. You just sold me on it. Thank you.
Board Member Rosati.
And was, did I read, was, was it potentially 140 residential units or something like that? 160?
160.
160.
Yeah.
Good.
Any other board member questions? Okay.
One more question. In the residential site plan, is that park at the corner anticipated to remain?
No, the, the common areas, if you will, for the office building, the park was on the corner. For the residential project, we're going to make the open space more internal to that project.
So there's not going to be any new public space as part of the residential version?
No, and to be honest with you, I think that's a challenging place to get to, you know? Both sides of that project have very active streets, traffic-wise. So I, I think the idea of walking across Alameda to get to that park is probably, maybe not be as realistic as, as, as we thought when it was first planned. So we really thought for the residential, it'll be space for the residents in the community. We have looked at, and this is something that's going to come to you, come to the, in the application, we have looked at creating a space that could be used for, as community space in the project as well. So there would be indoor space that the community could use for meetings. But the common area elements, the open space, would, would be designed into the project, into the residential project.
I think, just going off of some comments that we heard from the public, that that would be a big element that'll be missing. And considering Talaria, the offices across the street, people on their lunch break, the two bus stops on either side of that corner, there's ample opportunity for people to use that, plus as just a beautification area in that, in that corner of the street. So I would, I would highly consider, you know, you guys keeping that public component to it, because that is, that is something that I think people have been kind of promised over the last 20 years. And to have that go away would probably be a, a big problem for a lot of folks.
Let us, let us work that then into the design. It happens to be the side of the site where the retail space would be. So it lends itself maybe to a, a connection that way. So let us work on something this week on that.
Thank you.
And Chair, just if I can, I, I know, I just want to go back to redirect that what's before you tonight is the extension for the 12-month period on the office. And, and we hear, we hear the comments, both from the public and from the board members. I will just say this, let's see what we can do over this year period if you all recommend to the council an extension. And hopefully, track record, our track record and, and Mr. Worth's track record, actually, of building great projects, including Second Century. And I will say, he does not skimp on open space. So we will work with the developer. And at the end of the day, I think collectively, if we get through this process, we'll be able to come back to you in the, within a year's time. in a, within a year's time and show you that Mr. Worth did not just propose to build a building, but he proposed to build a neighborhood. And with neighborhoods comes open space and other amenities. And like I said, he, he builds quality products, so we will, we will work towards that. But we, we hear you, we hear the concerns, and we will work towards that effort. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Ramirez. Okay, are there, oh, yes. Vice Chair Hadian.
I have a question for staff, and I want to know about the filing for this EIR. We're filing, we're actually approving the extension for EIR of the residential project, correct?
We are, what is being requested of you is to consider a one-year extension to complete an environmental impact report that would look at a modified project description that includes both office as one option, as well as a mixed-use project that includes residential as, as another option. So we would be looking at the project as a whole through that environmental review.
So two alternatives will be provided in the new EIR, the office and the residential mixed use?
The entire scope of the project, whether it's office or residential, would be evaluated through the sequel process, which includes preparation of an environmental impact report.
Because so far, we had the EIR for the office building, and that expires in April. Unless we keep the EIR for the office building and add the design alternative for the residential, that doesn't make sense. Seems like we're extending the EIR for something new, and the office is totally forgotten. But you're confirming that it will be both alternatives, the office and the residential mixed use?
Yeah, let me, let me clarify, Board Member Hadian, and I apologize if we did not make this clear. The project, as an office project, that was previously entitled, was not entitled through an environmental impact report. It went through a sequel process, and I believe, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong, Lisa and/or Jana, that it was done through, at that time, a mitigated negative declaration, which is kind of, if you look at it in the hierarchy of environmental review, there's exemptions. There's negative declarations with mitigation measures, or an MND, sometimes we call that. And then at the highest level of review is the environmental impact report. So what we're doing now is, as, as you've all mentioned, there's been quite a timeframe, right? From when the initial project by the prior owner was prepared, then subsequent amendments, things have changed over time. There's been development. So the purpose of the sequel process now is to evaluate the whole project, including the office, if you want to call it, the original office application that's currently in effect, as well as the residential. But collectively, look at all that and ensure that, at the point in time when it comes before the board for consideration on a recommendation of the council, and eventually the council consideration of the project, that we've done our due diligence to review it from a sequel process. And the vehicle that we're going to use that, that use to undertake that is called an environmental impact report. So you're right, we were going to look at everything comprehensively and ensure that full disclosure, which is the intent of that document, is provided so that when you go to make a decision, you're well informed of any potential impacts that are associated, that could be associated with the project.
So a question for you. When do you expect, or when the applicant expects the draft EIR to be ready? And when will you share that with the public? And when does it come back to the planning board for review or for questions and comments?
So Vice Chair Hadian, I think, if you ask the developer, he's going to say the EIR is going to be prepared next week. So I, so I, so Jeff, no, please, please don't answer that. So I, I will say this, we've looked at the schedule that it will take us to prepare it. And we, we don't, we want to under-promise and over-perform. Over the one-year period, if we, if they're granted the extension, we've come up with the schedule to prepare an environmental document, to hold the required meetings, and to provide the required periods of public review so that the community can fully be aware of what the project impacts would be under SEQA. And also so that they know the extent of the scope of development that would be considered. So all that to the public that commented earlier. All that would be available. There'd be public hearings. There'd be a scoping meeting. We'll go through that whole effort that you guys are very familiar with, we did recently. And then ultimately, it'll conclude in a meeting before you. Well, you'll look at the environmental document before you make a recommendation. And then ultimately, the final will be presented to the council, and then they'll use that to analyze the project and consider Mr. Worth's request, right, the full project. So that'll happen over the year's time. If we can finish it sooner, great. But not to beat a, not to beat a drum, but with staffing levels what they are, we want to make sure we, we don't run into a situation where I'm having them come back to you in the middle of the year to ask for another six-month extension. So we are working hard as a group, as a team here collectively, to bring something that the community and you all will be happy to see presented to you, and then you can make a decision on whether the project moves forward. So it'll take us a year.
Just one more question. Every time that you extend the, the time for preparation of EIR is one year from the, the date it expires?
It, it, it depends, Vice Chair. I think in this particular case, we've sat down with the developer, we've sat down, and they've now provided and are preparing the project description. And with the project description update that they're providing, we, we've talked to our consultants, and they've come up with a schedule to complete the work within the next year. So we have a pretty good gauge now of what it'll take us to get to that endpoint. But ultimately, you know, when it comes to hearings, that's always kind of a little bit in play because ultimately, we have to have the meetings before you. You have to evaluate the project and then make a recommendation. But we feel that we can complete that whole effort within a year. Other EIRs, if, if you recall, have taken more than a year, all right? It's taken a couple of years, right? But we think that where we're at with this project, a year is reasonable to complete that effort.
Thank you. I have one last question. On Exhibit C2, behind the, on the back of the letter by the property owner, there is a rendering. I don't think that this is for the, the second alternative, which is the residential. This is just the other project, right?
That's correct.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, they, they included that, the rendering of the Second Century project as, to accompany the letter that they prepared. Thank you very much. I have no other question.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, so I now declare this hearing closed, and the planning board will now deliberate. What is the planning board's pleasure? Board Member Rosati.
I think the, the request is reasonable. I think the fact that we potentially could have 160 residential units is valuable to our city and our residents at this time. And I would say that I am comfortable giving the, the extension based on that information. And, and we have a, a good project for our city. Fast is not necessarily always good. So I, I rather we, we take our time, we, we get a really good project that's right in this, by the way, right in the middle of our city. We get a good project that could benefit the community potentially. And, and as it was said, Mr. Worth has built many projects throughout our city and is engaged in a very massive project right now. So the fact that this is a diamond in the middle of our city, I'm sure that he will make the right decision.
Thank you, Board Member Rosati. Vice Chair Hadian?
Yes, I also agree with Board Member Rosati. This is not the first time a developer decides to shift its goals towards something that, a proposal that's more suitable and is actually serving the city toward its goal. Based on our housing element, we need more housing. And if this extension adds the alternative to review a residential mixed-use project, why not? I can support the extension.
Thank you. Yes, Board Member Gambola.
I concur with my fellow board members, also noting for anyone watching that this isn't some sort of like backdoor way to get in some special project. Everything that they're proposing, they're, it's, it's proposing something new, but under our current rules, really. So they're also, that 160 units includes 15% affordable per inclusionary policy, which is, we haven't had a lot of projects that have those, so it's nice that this project came in. You know, I was expecting when I was reading this to, for it to say, oh, because we have these entitlements from 2001, we can build this many units all at market rate. No, they're coming in with the new project under our new rules. They just want to analyze it to get a head up on the game, and I think it's perfectly reasonable and a great spot for that type of housing, as, you know, everyone's mentioned earlier. So I think granting this extension behooves us as a board and a city.
Thank you. Board Member Otakunian.
Any type of development should be a win-win situation for the developer and for the city. I don't think any type of development or any type of a project could move forward if it's not a win-win. And if the developer in this instance does need a bit more time in order to shift focus or refocus based on the changing climate, the, the financial climate or the real estate climate, then I think we need, we need to accommodate that. And, and so that we can get the right project at the right time in the right place. So in that regard, I'm encouraged by the fact that more thought is being put into this. And perhaps a more deliberate approach will be taken. And I also understand that the, the company itself is, is a reputable company and has come through in many ways in, in different instances for this city and, and other cities, of course. So in that regard, I'm able to support the extension. And the reason why I was asking those questions is to find, because I needed clarification for those who are viewing and for all of us here, get a better understanding of where we are, where, where are we heading, and when are we going to get there? So I'm sure everyone's anxious, including Mr. Worth and his team. So hopefully, by going through this extension, we're able to get a better product in the near future.
Thank you. I'm also in agreement with my fellow board members. I think it's a smart move, given the environments, and so I am supportive as well. With that, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. Resolution that the planning board of the city of Burbank recommending approval of the Fourth Amendment to the Development Agreement related to the Plan Development 2001-2, project number 18-002876.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Rosati, seconds. May I have the roll call vote?
Yes.
Please.
Board Member Gambola?
Yes.
Board Member Otakunian?
Yes.
Board Member Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hadian?
Yes.
And Chair Lou?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Worth. Thank you, Ms. Frank. Thank you, Ms. Bo, Bokey? I'm sorry. Listen up, it's Belkey. It's Belkey, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Okay, our next item on the agenda, oral communications from the public. So any persons speaking during this period may address the board on any matter concerning city business. Comments are limited to three minutes. To participate, please call 818-238-3335. Phone lines are now open, and if you could bear with us, it might take a few minutes for the first caller, callers to get through the line.
There are no callers in the queue.
Thank you very much. There be no further public comment. I now declare the public comment period closed. Next item is reports from city staff. Any reports?
Chair, we do have one report. This is a follow-up from City Attorney's Office. So Ian McMillan, the Assistant City Attorney, will be presenting a report regarding the handling of motions for planning board meetings.
Okay, great. So now we're going to have a report now for the planning board regarding a uniform and simplified process for handling motions during planning board meetings moving forward. And we have W. City Attorney Ian McMillan, who will summarize this report for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow board members. The purpose of my note-and-file report this evening is to provide a procedural guide for making motions during board meetings moving forward. In the past, my office, as a, you know, procedural traffic cop, so to speak, has relied on customary practice and just general parliamentary principles, just to conduct the meeting and make sure things go smoothly. You know, neither the Burbank City Council nor Planning Board has ever adopted any formal set of procedural rules, such as, as you may be aware of, Roberts Rules of Order or Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which are, which are newer. And that's due in large part because of the particular advantages in not doing so. If the city continues to not adopt any formal rules, it can maintain the flexibility in conducting its city business. It could also kind of retain a freedom from some of the more arcane and rigid rules that comes with Robber Rules and even, even the newer Rosenberg's Rules. And importantly, it also, it maintains a, what I, what I consider an equal playing field for, for all members at all times. Sometimes when you have newer members to the board, they may not be as in tune or aware of some of these more formal and voluminous rules, such as the Roberts Rule. So, you know, by, again, by not having any formal rules, it could just really help create a, a smooth process for everyone. With that being said, you know, in recognition of the benefit to each member and having some form of a procedural uniformity in making motions, I'm providing this simplified guide to make a motion just to ensure that future meetings are as smooth as possible. I'll be describing five motions tonight. The five are main motion, a friendly amendment motion, a substitute motion, a motion to withdraw, and a motion to reconsider. I'm also going to give examples just to, you know, help distinguish each, each motion and also to help address situations where there may be multiple motions before the board for consideration. And I apologize, some of it may seem very simple and intuitive, but my intention was to keep this report as, as brief as possible. I'm also going to read, you know, mostly verbatim from my staff report because I, you know, organize the examples as best as possible. So if you have that in front of you, it could help. But if not, it's fine. The, the examples are very simple. So the first motion again is a main motion. The purpose is to introduce an item before the board for, for, for consideration. Example I provided is, I move the staff recommendation to approve project number 123. Simple enough. Again, if that's seconded, you guys know this, it goes before the board for consideration. Now, the second motion is a friendly amendment. When, when I think of friendly amendment, I think of the ultimate flexibility, the ultimate kumbaya moment. Because the purpose is to offer an amendment to the main motion that is still supportive of the that is still supportive of the main motion without requiring a vote of the board to replace the original motion. And again, piggybacking off of my previous example, there's currently a motion to approve Project Number 123 on the floor for discussion, and a board member expressly proposes a friendly amendment to approve Project Number 123, but to also request that staff report back to the board within a year on Project Number 123's compliance with its conditions of approval. A friendly amendment can either occur before or after a main motion is seconded. Again, just think flexibility. However, the friendly amendment must be accepted by the original motion maker, and if it's seconded by another board member, the board member who seconded the original motion as well. They also need to accept it. If the friendly emotion, if the friendly emotion is accepted, then the friendly amendment replaces the original motion. My third motion is, and this would be useful, the third motion is a substitute motion. This would be useful in the scenario in which someone attempts to do a friendly emotion, but it's not accepted. You still have that ability to amend the motion. You do it by a substitute motion. The purpose is to remove the motion under consideration, the main motion, and replace it with a new motion. Example. When there's a main motion on the floor to approve a project, a substitute motion would be, and I quote, "I move a substitute motion that the board approve Project Number 123 if the recommended conditions of approval include additional condition of approval number X." I just put that variable in, just imagine, an added condition of approval. Or, "I move a substitute motion that the board deny Project Number 123." Now, I've included a bit in here because I think this is really the point. I think this is the main purpose of my report. You guys probably know the, just generally, the basics of the different motions. But I include a section here on how to address multiple motions when they're before you. And the main takeaway is the last motion presented should be considered first. So in my two scenarios here, I want to go through my first scenario. It's a simpler version. Let's say Board Member 1 says, "I move that we approve Project Number 123." It's seconded, so it's before the board for consideration. Board Member 2 says, "I move a substitute motion that we approve Project Number 123 if amended to include a new condition of approval number X." So in characterizing the motions, again, that first motion is a main motion. The second, by Board Member 2, is an attempt at a substitute motion. So in order, you know, I want to consider the outcomes here. So Board Member 2's motion is considered first because it's the most recent motion that was seconded before the board for discussion. If the Board Member, if Board Member 2's motion fails, Board Member 1's motion will be considered. If Board Member 2's motion passes, there's no need to consider Board Member 1's motions, or motion, because Board Member 2's motion replaced it. Board Member 2's motion replaced Board Member 1's original motion. Again, simple. Scenario 2 is just a slightly more complex iteration. We're just having a situation where there's actually three motions for discussion. So my example 2 is Board Member 1, again, "I move that we approve Project Number 123." Board Member 2, "I move a substitute motion that we approve Project Number 123 if amended to include a new condition of approval number X." Again, these would be, both be seconded for them to be effective. Board Member 3 says, "I move a substitute motion that we deny Project Number 123." So in that case, we have Board Member 1 with the main motion. Board Member 2 has a substitute motion, and then Board Member 3 comes in with another substitute motion to replace both prior motions, if it were to pass. And again, that's where I want to go into reviewing the possible outcomes. Board Member 3's motion should be considered first, again, because it's the latest motion. If the motion fails, Board Member 2's motion is considered. If Board Member 2's motion passes, it is not necessary to consider Board Member 1's motion because Board Member 2's motion substitutes for it. Different situation. If Board Member 3's motion fails, Board Member 2's motion is considered. If Board Member 2's motion fails, the substitute motion for Board Member 1's motion fails, and Board Member 1, wait, let me, I think this might have been a typo. This is good. If Board Member 3's motion fails, Board Member 2's motion is considered. If Board Member 2's motion fails, the substitute motion for Board Member 2's motion fails, and Board Member 1's motion is then considered. My last scenario, in this second scenario, if Board Member 3's motion passes, it is not necessary to consider Board Member 1's motion and Board Member 2's motion because Board Member 3's motion substitutes for the both of them. Those are my scenarios on handling multiple motions before the board. My fourth motion I'm discussing tonight is a motion to withdraw, another very simple and intuitive one. The purpose is just to withdraw the item from discussion. The main takeaway from this is that in making the motion to withdraw, it's only the individual that made the initial motion that can make the motion to withdraw. That's the main takeaway. I included a note that said this type of motion typically occurs following some debate by the board that may provide additional information that influences the mover of the motion to reconsider continued debate on the original motion presented. Another board member may subsequently make the same motion after it has been property withdrawn. So again, it's not a dead issue. If another board member liked that motion, they could always attempt to make it, get a second, bring it before the board for discussion. The last motion is a motion to reconsider. I think this came up briefly during our short-term rental ordinance item. So I find this one important. So the purpose of the motion to reconsider is to revisit discussion of an issue, of a matter listed on the, of the planning board agenda for action. Now, making the motion to reconsider. A motion to reconsider must be made by an individual that previously voted in the majority of the original motion. So let's say a project, project, let's go back to project Number 123. If it passes by a three-to-two vote, if a proper motion to reconsider is made, it needs to be made by one of the three members that voted in approval to reconsider the item. Now, the timing of it is very important. A motion to reconsider must be made at the same meeting where the original motion was discussed. Can't be at the next meeting. Can't be three meetings down the line. I include an example, but it's, "I move to reconsider the board's approval of Project Number 123." It's just the quote. That concludes my report. Again, it's a note-and-file, kind of a heads-up. The idea being that, in the past, we've kind of just operated, everyone has been, you know, working together and has never been an item where there was substantive debate, where there was multiple amendments. So, you know, we kind of just relied on how we've done things in the past. But I think in light of a few matters in the last year, I think providing this guide here is, it's not only simple, but that I can get everyone on the same page, and you'll know where I'm coming from if I ever have to step in and just referee procedurally any motions before you for discussion. So I'm available for any questions you have. If you need any other examples, I'm happy to put some more examples on the fly as best as I can.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. This is very helpful. You know, because I come from Roberts Rules and Rosenberg Rules background, there's no such thing as friendly amendments. So it's good to clarify this. Otherwise, you know, I obviously would be working from a different set of rules than what the Burbank Planning Board and also just the City Council typically uses. Do other board members have any questions? I think we're good. Thank you so much, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you.
So if we're going to note and file this, can I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Seconding.
Thank you, Mr. Gambola. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Board Member Gambola?
Yes.
Board Member Otakunian?
Yes.
Board Member Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hadian?
Yes.
And Chair Lou?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Any other reports from city staff?
No, Chair, that was it.
Okay. The next agenda item is the approval of a minutes from January 25th, 2021, Planning Board Meeting. Are there any questions or comments or a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
And a roll call vote, please?
Board Member Gambola?
Yes.